The following is a production of Keri TV, the town of Keri's government access channel.
Call to order the January 27th meeting of the Keri Town Council. Before we start with our ceremonial opening, I want to let everyone know that Ms. Robinson is representing Keri at the Triangle J meeting and will join us later. At this time, I'll recognize Councilmember George to provide our ceremonial opening. Mr. George?
Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.3 on our agenda, which is the adoption of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
A second?
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no recognitions, reports, and presentations this evening, so we'll move right to Public Speaks Out. Our next agenda, Public Speaks Out, we have instructions for speaking at the forum on the printed agenda. If you'd like to speak, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the printed agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing. There's a one-hour time limit for all of Public Speaks Out speakers. There's a three-minute time limit, as I said, for the speakers, and there's a timer located on the podium. When the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. When the time expires, the yellow light will turn into a flashing red light, and the speakers should conclude their comments at that time. If you do not, I'll interrupt you, not trying to be rude or mean, but trying to be fair to all the speakers who would like to speak. Please adhere to the three-minute time limit. We also ask that groups have a spokesperson to speak on their behalf, and I thank everyone in our audience for understanding and respecting that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from the meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite the first speaker to the
My name is Susan Gates. I am a resident of Keri and an employee at SAS where I am Special Advisor on Education. I want to thank the Keri Town Council for this opportunity to discuss why we at SAS support the Connect NC Bond, which is up for vote on March 15. Connect NC funds are critical to the future of Keri and to North Carolina in many ways, but especially to our higher education system. More than 2 million people have moved into this state since the last bond referendum 15 years ago, and that growth is thankfully not slowing. But to keep up with the demands of our growing state and to stay competitive in our global economy, we must have a long-term vision to ensure that our higher education system has the capacity to help students develop the skills that Keri and North Carolina businesses now require. Here in the Triangle, companies, including SAS, are dealing with a very real skills gap, especially in the areas of science, technology, engineering, and math, the STEM fields. And a significant driver in those gaps is that people just don't have the education levels needed to fill the jobs. By 2020, 67% of future jobs in our state will require education beyond high school. The problem is that currently, 58% of North Carolinians do not have the education attainment and the skills for those jobs. Estimates are that we could have a 46,000 worker shortage. Connect NC will help to reverse those skills gaps by increasing the capacity and services our universities and colleges can provide. These funds will support new technology, new innovation, new research across our higher ed system. It will fund new buildings, increase the number of classrooms, and provide much-needed repairs and renovations. And all of those improvements can be accomplished without any increase in taxes, any new taxes, or any harm to our state's strong credit rating. Connect NC is a vital component for continued economic growth here in Keri. Those of us at SAS and I hope each of you will demonstrate your support for these critical investments in our education system by supporting the March 15 vote on the Connect NC Bond referendum. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out?
My name is Mark Lemire. I'm from the Hollybrook Homeowners Association. I'm joined here with Ann Vatter and our newly voted-in president, and Steve Schenken, also on our board. And we're here tonight to talk to you guys just quickly about the zoning vote that you have coming up on the 12-acre parcel of land that we have in Hollybrook. We met with our neighbors over in Kildare Estates last week to discuss their concerns. We heard that they had a protest against our initial R8 proposal. So we wanted to just get in front of you and just let you know that we had a great conversation with them. As it turns out, our goals were actually very much the same as far as the actual outcome. So it's very refreshing to know that the two neighborhoods really had the same vision for what we're looking for. And as part of that, we're really, we're only about four or five homes, if you will, away as far as our difference as a maximum capacity of what we're looking for. As you may be aware, if there's any delays or anything like that with this zoning, if it does go to the R40, it might actually impact our ability to keep up the timelines and the payments and whatnot to the town for our water and sewer project. So you'll notice that we had a good act, or an act of goodwill towards Kildare Estates, and we basically moved our zoning option from R8 to R12 as a sign of goodwill again towards them, and we're hopeful that it stays on track. It's a, they're a great neighborhood. We want the same thing as them. I think it's the same outcome. We're just looking to take it from two different angles. But as far as what we want, very much the same, and we're looking forward to working with them. So that is all I have.
Thank you. Next speaker for Public Speaks Out. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out?
My name is Jody Atherton, and I represent the Kildare Estates neighborhood concerning the Hollybrook rezoning case 15REZ22, which is on the agenda tonight. My comments are regarding the 12.3-acre vacant lot currently recommended by the zoning board for R12 zoning. Kildare Estates is not opposed to the development of this vacant lot. We are opposed to a significant increase in traffic through our subdivision. The traffic pattern is not properly shown on the zoning proposal. In the map given to you, the blue line shows the zoning plan through Hollybrook Drive. However, the pink route on Brook Cross Drive would be the most direct way to and from any new development. R12 zoning would allow roughly 44 houses to be built. Our neighborhood only has 50 houses in five times the area. We're talking about essentially doubling the amount of traffic on our street. Brook Cross Drive through Kildare Estates includes two blind curves, dangerous enough to warrant Wake County schools to consistently move school bus stops due to safety concerns. My six-year-old son's bus stop was moved this year for safety reasons, and I am not the only neighbor whose bus stop has been changed. Many neighbors use our street to walk or ride bikes with their families and pets, and since we have no sidewalks and few streetlights, doubling the traffic on the street would truly pose a danger to our residents. We've met with representatives from Hollybrook and have not been able to reach a compromise. However, we believe both our neighborhoods want roughly the same outcome for this lot. At the zoning board meeting, a representative for the Hollybrook HOA even stated they would not want more than 24 to 29 houses to be built on the vacant lot, and R12 zoning would mean 44 houses. Due to the unusual nature of this rezoning case, legally, no conditions are allowed to be added, such as limiting the number of houses on the lot. During the last planning and zoning meeting, there was considerable discussion about the lot zoning. Mr. Evangelista, the zoning chair, stated that the rezoning cases involving undeveloped acreage typically zone the vacant lot R40 as a placeholder. In fact, another undeveloped parcel in this rezoning plan is recommended for R40. An R40 designation won't hinder the sale of the land, but would allow citizen input so that safety and other concerns can be addressed once development plans have been generated. We strongly urge you to question, Mr. Evangelista, about the practice of using R40 as placeholder zoning. You also received a petition this week in which 100% of homeowners in our neighborhood signed showing their support. I would ask at this time that all the neighbors who are here from Kildare Estates stand up in support of our petition. We respectfully request that the Town Council rezon the 12.3-acre vacant lot as R40 placeholder zoning in agreement with the applicant, the town of Keri, until a development plan has been proposed for the site to allow for community input. Thank you for hearing our concerns.
Thank you. Next speaker for Public Speaks Out, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? See no one, so we'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to our consent agenda. For the benefit of people watching on TV, I'll take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have approval of January 7, 2016 quasi-judicial meeting minutes, approval of January 14, 2016 regular meeting minutes, ratification of resolution Alston Village Development Plan, soccer park lease agreement with Carolina FC Railhawks, soccer field lease agreement with Triangle Football Club Alliance TFCA, South Harrison Avenue property rezoning and comprehensive plan amendment 15REZ18 and 15CPA08, 15REZ18 consistency statement, William P. Franklin Annexation 15A19, Bachelor Road rezoning 15REZ21, 15REZ21 consistency statement, Triangle Limited Annexation 15A26, Level G LLC Annexation 15A25, Bid Award for Crescent Greenway Bridge Replacement TF16048. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor of the consent agenda items, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Instead of three minutes, our speakers now have five minutes. Our first public hearing is in honor initiated annexation petition 15A22 MS Holding Company LLC. Property owners and the town residents may speak at this public hearing. Mr. Nicholas of our staff will introduce this item. We're going to open the public hearing, and council may take action this evening to defer action to a future meeting. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This request is for annexation of 5.07 acres of property located off Wilson Road and Chapel Hill Road, approximately 1,300 feet southeast of the Northwest Keri Parkway and Chapel Hill Road intersection. The request also includes 0.30 acres of adjacent right-of-way. The property is in Keri's ETJ and its own transitional residential conditional use. Request is associated with subdivision plan 15SP20, which proposes a total of 19 lots. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Get my screen back or not? Thank you. Okay. So now's the time for the public hearing for 15A22, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll open it up to council members for questions. We, staff would recommend that we have a motion to defer action to a future meeting.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. We now move to our second public hearing. It's in honor initiated annexation petition 15A23 SAS Institute Annexation. Property owners and town residents may speak at the public hearing. Councilmember Robinson and I are both employed by SAS Institute. Councilmembers have a duty to voice items, to vote on items like this unless their vote is a conflict of interest. Neither I nor a member of my family will receive a direct benefit from this annexation, and Ms. Robinson's not here, so we don't have to ask her the same, and if she does come in before we have this vote, we'll ask her that question. So based on that, we'll open the public hearing, and Mr. Nicholas will once again present this item. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. This request is for annexation of 5.34 acres located off Research Drive, southeast of the Research Drive and SAS Campus Drive intersection. Request also includes 0.08 acres of adjacent right-of-way. Property is in Keri's ETJ and its own residential 40. Request is associated with site plan 15SP08, which is for a proposed road off of Research Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for the public hearing for annexation request 15A23, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at the public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions. If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve annexation 15A23.
A second?
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to our third public hearing. Agenda item 5.3 is a public hearing for Paraclete Professional Park rezoning request. We're going to hear from our staff. The applicant will explain the request, and we'll conduct a public hearing. Council will not take action on this item tonight. Instead, we're going to refer to our planning and zoning board and get their opinion and recommendation. I'll ask Ms. Spearman to introduce this item.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a request to rezon about 21 acres on Guernsey Trail and Kildare Farm Road. The property is on the south side of US1 across from Wake Med Hospital. It is an assemblage of the Ponderosa subdivision. The existing zoning on the site is R40. This request would expand the Waverly Mixed Use Overlay District to include this property and rezone the property to the Mixed Use District. This is the second public hearing on this particular rezoning request. The first hearing was held in June of 2015, and that was in conjunction with an associated comprehensive plan amendment, and that a plan amendment was to add the property to the Waverly Community Activity Center and change the plan designation from low-density residential to office and institutional. At that time, the preliminary development plan, which is a required component of a mixed-use district, had office as the predominant use of the site. The comprehensive plan amendment was adopted and approved in October of 2015. The land uses that were proposed in the original preliminary development plan have been changed, so that's why it's coming before you as a second public hearing due to the change in the preliminary development plan. This table summarizes the proposed land uses at this time. The uses include a life care community and up to 180,000 square feet of office. The office component includes some flexibility, up to 45,000 square feet of that office allotment could be replaced with second-floor residential units or hotel. The maximum building height for any buildings on the property would be 80 feet and five This is a color view of the preliminary development plan as proposed. The area in the blue color is the life care facility. This green area is office within a parking garage, in this case, or parking deck associated with that. The two southernmost buildings are where there would be some flexibility as proposed, where they could be office or some combination of office and residential, or alternatively for these two buildings, a hotel with up to 150 rooms. There are several modifications included with this request. First is reduction of the thoroughfare buffer from 100 feet to 50 feet. Also, the applicant was proposing to provide a sound wall or fence adjacent to US1, which would be within the buffer area if it is reduced, and that would be where the thoroughfare buffer, where the actual thoroughfare buffer could exceed 50 feet, so that in any event there would always, even with the buffer reduction, there would be a 50-foot undisturbed buffer outside of any proposed fence or noise wall. And also, with the rezoning request, applicant is requesting permission to remove two champion trees, one being impacted by road widening and the other due to topographic constraints. There are several road improvements that are committed elements as part of the request. These include intersection improvements and signal modifications on Kildare Farm Road at Tryon Road, new Waverly Place and Wake Med Drive, and also a new right-in, right-out access point on Kildare Farm Road. As I mentioned, the land use plan designation for the site currently with the action taken in October was, is now office and institutional, and the uses proposed are consistent with this designation. There are some stream buffers on the site according to Keri's GIS maps. Field determination of these features would be made at the time of the site plan review. The preliminary development plan does incorporate the stream buffer along the rear portion of the property line. There are no facilities in the park's Recreation and Cultural Resources Master Plan in the vicinity, and this shows the road system in the area, Kildare Farm Road and Tryon Road being major thoroughfares. This map again shows the transit service in the area. There's a C Trans fixed route along Kildare Farm Road and a Triangle Transit Route along Tryon. This map shows properties that were notified at the public hearing. And with that, following the applicant's comments will be available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Spearman. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant forward.
Good evening. I'm JW Sharn with IDS, the land planning consultant for this project. Last year in June, when we were here for public hearing, and we presented a pretty extensive office medical park facility supporting the hospital and uses, which was a great super idea, but following that hearing, there's a level of interest that occurred for some alternative support uses to mix this site more than what was proposed. But we feel to the better for what this site can be used for. And more particularly, you may notice in your staff report, we may have increased 200,000 square feet overall, but the main thing to remember is what support uses that we're providing, like, we still will have 180,000 square feet upwards of the medical office mix that will be towards the front of the site. In addition, we're looking for an alternative hotel use up to 150 rooms, which would be towards the front of the site. And then in the rear, you would have the continuing care up to 370 units. But with that said, all of these uses kind of interrelate and mix to the hospital and adjacent instead of just putting a complete medical park in there, and that's good for traffic. And good for traffic means to the point that upwards of over 40% of peak hour reductions with the use as proposed here, even though there's additional square footage overall. The items that were brought up too concerning the champion trees that you see, staff has advised us, you know, the two at the entrance way there that you see to the access points, they are spaced what DOT requires, and we're required to have two into this site because of the density that we have for safety reasons, such that those trees would not be allowed to be saved for that purpose. However, all other trees on the site, staff is asking that we address those at the point that site plans are submitted individually for these tracks, such that if the buildings need to be shifted, or parking needs to be done, you have the specificity there to address those. And in addition to that, when those plans do come in, the staff gives advice to what we should do. All of those plans come back individually for your review and consideration at that time. With the increase, or I mean, in square footage and decrease in traffic, the developer is still committing to all of the 14 intersections that were identified to the level of service improvements on that previous traffic study. So we're not asking for any changes in that, but we're just telling you it's a better balance to the traffic in the area. With the buffer reduction that you see too to the north, as you can tell with that drive that comes in, there's just no physical way to maintain the standards for spacing on the access and keep that buffer intact at 100 feet. So we are going to be working with staff to keep that buffer at the wish we can. If it gets to about 50, then we'll put in that wall there that will be aesthetically pleasing behind that 50-foot undisturbed buffer in those areas. Also too, the buildings have remained, no building over five stories. We do feel that, you know, this being more mixed and being more walkable, this facility, the continuing area is going to be more of a campus-like atmosphere. It's going to have central gardens, fountains, or have independent, independent care, and we just feel that it's a better mix of use for the site, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Spearman, do you have additional comments?
No.
Okay. Now's the time for the public hearing, 15REZO2, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments. Before it goes to the planning and zoning board, I just want to say that I like the original proposal, and I'll have to be convinced to change my mind. So I'm hoping that there'll be evidence and discussion that'll drive the additional information my way because I don't see it, I live very close to there, so does Chuck Smith. The traffic goes out on Tryon probably where the red light is, probably not on Kildare, and that's not a traffic issue. So to put a hotel there and a assisted living, which by the way, there are several assisted livings in the area, and independent care, which is good, but I just need, I'm just letting everyone know that, before this gets back to me, if you've got additional information that will change my mind, please send it my way. Anyone else?
I would just add a friendly counter to that. I kind of like the assisted living component myself. I think our senior issues task force, one of the things they identified was we have a lack of those facilities in town, and I see this as a way to, you know, get some more of that. To me, having it close to the medical facilities and the hospital makes a lot of sense, and some of the traffic comments made by Mr. Sharon and... sense, and some of the traffic comments made by Mr. Sharon and in our real-world experiences, we know they don't venture out a whole heck of a lot, so.
The only other comment I would add to that is, having dealt with my father-in-law before he passed, and my mother before she passed, going to various hospitals that were surrounded by assisted living, it gives you a totally different feel than our hospitals are surrounded by medical facilities, so that's what I'm afraid of. Not assisted living. I think assisted living's great, and it's hard to get your parent or someone into an assisted living or independent living facility. I think Jack's been through that, I've been through that, and if you have a family member you're trying to find one, good luck, you know, because there's not a lot, so I agree with you there.
I'd like to comment, I think putting it at the backside like they did certainly takes it away from that, but it makes it close enough to walk to a doctor's office, so it's not like in a campus full of asphalt. I like putting it at the back. And I think what he said about the market determining the, when you go, you leave with the one plan and you try to get people to go with it and you get a better idea, I think I like the flexibility of coming back with this. I like what I see.
Okay. Other than Sean coming?
Yeah, I remember when this first came out, there were some concerns, they were mostly related about construction with Thornwood, you know, which is just natural anytime you have any development. But it's almost like the auto mall. You know, you're going to have, I think, these type developments that are ideal near the medical complex. Yeah, I'm kind of torn, because I love the concept that was initially planned, you know, we keep hearing that the new, the new model, the new paradigm is having the offices on the first floor and then having the residential above it, or offices on the lower floors, residential above, and it would have been, it would have been neat and exciting if, you know, if that materialized. You know, that said, there's a lot worse uses, and, you know, and someone that, when you do have, it is nice sometimes to have a hotel near the, near the hospital. I've had situations where, back in the day, you know, before my, my situation was corrected, you had people coming, it was always good to have the hotel really convenient, really nearby. So they're all good uses, you know, a lot of times when they're before us, the use we wanted is countered by something that's just not something we're, you know, we really are comfortable with. Here, I think, you know, I'm willing to show some flexibility, you know, I, I don't mind hearing why that can't happen, but I'm going to try to keep an open mind, especially as long as they protect Thornwood on that, on that residential side.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, this will go to our Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation, and they'll see it sometime in the future.
Yes.
Do you have a date?
I expect that it will be coming back before you, hopefully in March.
Okay, thank you. We now move to our fourth public hearing. It's the Mayfair Community Activities Center Comprehensive Plan Amendment 15 CPA 10 and 15 REZ 26, Gordon Street and Southwest Maynard Park, Southwest Maynard Road rezoning. We're going to hear a staff report, allow the applicant to explain their requests. We're going to conduct a public hearing for both items. Council will not take action on these items tonight. Instead, we're going to refer the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning request to our Planning and Zoning Board. Each of these items will come back to council at a future date. Mr. Ramage will present the comprehensive plan amendment request, and Ms. Spearman will present the annexation and rezoning request. We'll start with Mr. Ramage.
Okay, thank you and good evening. This case is a request to amend the comprehensive plan for approximately 3.6 acres off of Southwest Maynard Road. The subject site has partial frontage, as you can see, on Southwest Maynard. It's located just east of Mayfair Plaza. The site's on the north side of Maynard, near the intersection with Kilmaine Drive, which goes around behind the Big Lots Plaza Shopping Center. So this slide zooms in a little bit more on the site, so you can see that the eastern property boundary is, runs right along behind the Food Lion and Mayfair Plaza, and the southern property is, you know, half of it's on Maynard Road and a portion of it backs up to Bruegger's Bagels Site, and the adjacent, there's a small multi-tenant retail building right next to that. Immediately west and north of the site is the Bertrand subdivision, and Gordon Street in that subdivision currently terminates at the boundary of this property. For a little background, the homes on Gordon and Rose Streets tend to date from 1961 to 1963, and the adjacent Food Lion, the original supermarket dates from 1968. Mail notification of the hearing was sent to all properties within 800 feet of the site, as shown in yellow on this map. And this site is generally unaffected by any identified streams, so it's fairly free of that and has fairly gentle site topography. In terms of town park and recreation resources, the town has its Rose Street Park is immediately north of the site. This is a 0.6 acre pocket park that is in the neighborhood. The comprehensive transportation plan currently recommends Southwest Maynard Road as a four-lane median divided road. However, the existing section, as you probably are aware, is five-lane, and at present there are no plans to change this, and that designation is being reexamined as part of the plan update. The site benefits from four public bus transit routes. C-Trans Routes 1 and 2 run on Maynard. C-Trans Route 5 goes north-south on Kildare Farm Road and includes express service, and Triangle Transit has Route 301 also on Maynard with a diversion along Kilmaine. This site's actually made up of two parcels. The larger parcel is currently split zone between general commercial and residential 12 district. Most of that larger parcel is also included within the Mayfair Mixed Use Overlay District. The smaller parcel is zoned exclusively R12. And by and large, this zoning has been in place for well over 20 years. We tried to do some research, it dates back three zoning ordinances ago. The current land use plan places most of the site within the Mayfair Mixed Use Activity Center with an underlying designation of commercial, which matches the zoning. A small portion of the site is outside of the activity center and is designated as low-density residential, which is the yellow color you see on the map. The applicants are requesting to remove the site entirely from the Mayfair Activity Center and to also redesignate the site as Office and Light Industrial, which is Office/IND as you see on this map. The Office/IND land use category tends to be used primarily for future flex and light industrial uses. In the solid blue boundary is actually, is the boundary of the Mayfair Activity Center. It's a medium-sized activity center built around two shopping centers, the original Mayfair Plaza, and also due south of it was now Big Lots Plaza, which was formerly Kroger Plaza. And there's quite a bit of office in the area too, as the center extends down to the neighborhood professional office parks immediately to the south. So the staff report for this case includes analysis of five different considerations you may wish to bring to bear in its evaluation. The first consideration concerns the development metrics for this activity center. So in this slide, you see in the gray column, the recommended amounts of commercial and office space and residential in a standard community-sized activity center. And the gold column shows the current projected buildout of the center, and mostly the center is built out with the exception of the subject site and a handful of other properties. As can be seen in this slide, the activity center is doing fine in terms of its commercial and office space. In fact, it's, has, you know, quite a, quite a good mix. The center is kind of light in terms of housing within the immediate boundaries of the activity center. Of course, remember, the center dates back to the 1960s and is surrounded by quite a large number of built single-family neighborhoods, which don't show up in these metrics because it's not inside the boundary. The second consideration evaluated in the staff report concerns the suitability of the site for different kinds of infill. We looked at a couple of key considerations. First, the flexibility, pardon, the feasibility of different uses on this site, and secondly, the likely value and stability that development of the site might offer to the immediately adjacent neighborhood. The first of those observations is that, as you saw in the earlier slides, this property does not have much frontage on Maynard, and that absence of frontage does make the site probably very unlikely for retail and Class A office uses. It's pretty much hidden back behind those commercial uses you saw in the earlier slides. At the same time, most of the infill non-residential uses, perhaps especially light industrial, are also unlikely to add value to the neighborhood or to adjacent properties. That might be value-neutral, but as council is aware with the current efforts to update Cary's comprehensive plan, one of the priorities we've been looking at over the last couple of years are ways to stabilize, improve, and add value to Cary's core neighborhoods. Some other observations for this site, the opinion of staff is that residential uses actually might be most suitable on the site and could offer greater opportunity for boosting value in the adjacent neighborhood. Residential uses on the site also, of course, benefit from the service on the site, as four fixed route lines on it. And interesting, in our experience, the type of housing or lot size you put, it's not going to be as important as the value in terms of housing placed on the site. What really has made a difference in the past, whether it's townhomes, patio homes, single-family detached, it's the market value, if you did put housing on the site, that it's, stands at a good chance of helping and strengthening neighborhoods. And precedent exists. MedCon Court on the opposite quadrant, next to Greenwood Forest neighborhood, is a good example of higher-density infill that in fact came in at price points higher than the adjacent neighborhood and actually improved than the desirability of the adjacent neighborhood. The third consideration evaluated in the staff report concerns how the site might someday fit into a larger redevelopment of Mayfair Plaza. We feel the site would certainly have the greatest potential if there was the opportunity for the site to be incorporated into a larger redevelopment project. However, there are at present no plans that we're aware of for such redevelopment, and it should be acknowledged that this site has remained undeveloped for many years. In fact, this site, for those of you who've been in Cary for a while, this site was owned by Jeff Sugg and his family, who we, I believe, developed the original Mayfair Plaza Shopping Center over 50 years ago. This was a remnant piece, so the current site, the current owners acquired the site with the liquidation of the Sugg estate, I think in 2014. The fourth consideration evaluates the amendment request in terms of its conformance with the purpose and intent of activity centers, and key to that are the two bullets you see here. Activity centers have a goal of placing daily conveniences, shops, and employment within walking distance of nearby homes and residences, and facilitating easy travel between housing, shopping, and work. The proposed light industrial uses may not necessarily help support that purpose and And that brings us to our fifth and final consideration in evaluating this amendment's request and its conformance with the land use plan, and that would be transitions. So we looked at different kinds of typical transitions you see in activity centers, and I, there's three bullets of things that you typically find, going from a shopping center to an office use, and then straight into medium or low-density residential. Sometimes we go from shopping to high-density residential and then either have a buffer, a big buffer, or medium density, and then we transition to low. Sometimes we have shopping and we go straight to medium density or have a buffer and go straight to low-density residential. So that's the usual pattern we see and have planned for over time next to our shopping centers. But light industrial uses have not typically been used as a transition between commercial and low-density residential, single-family neighborhoods, so that may be a consideration that we should bear in mind with this case. Cary's land development ordinance includes four criteria to consider when evaluating plan amendment requests. We think two of these criteria may be of note. Under the second review criteria, we should probably note that the supply of light industrial land in Cary is tight. It's considered, it's continued to diminish over the last 20 years, and it is hard to find light industrial uses, to find land for that in Cary. Most of what's remaining is west of Davis Drive, usually along the Highway 55 corridor. It's a lot more rare to find it east of Davis Drive. Under the third review criteria, we wish to point out that sites in cases such as this are a central topic for work that's currently being done for Cary's new comprehensive plan via Imagine Cary. So emerging, if this bullet instead of saying a change in policies, if we said emerging policies, we have emerging policies being developed for redevelopment and for supporting established core neighborhoods in town. Those are not yet adopted, but these are how we look at old neighborhoods and how we look at compatibility, value, stabilization, and improvement are things that are currently being examined and may wish to bring to bear in this case. And with that, I'll turn the case over to Mary Spearman, and she will walk you through the rezoning case. Thank you.
Thank you.
As Mr. Ramage noted, existing zoning on the property is general commercial and residential 12. The general commercial portion also is in a mixed use overlay district. The proposed zoning is industrial conditional use with removal of the mixed use overlay district from the portion of the property that's currently in commercial zoning. There are several zoning conditions proposed. These include limiting land use to mini-storage and office. The mini-storage would have a maximum square footage of 100,000 square feet, and the office a maximum of 18,000 square feet. The maximum building height would be three stories or, and 38 feet. There's also a condition to limit access to the rental units through a common entrance so that there would be no exterior roll-up doors. Also, I would point out from a procedural standpoint, typically, a rezoning request is presented to the Planning and Zoning Board after the final action on an associated comprehensive plan amendment. Would point out, the land development ordinance does allow council at the request of the applicant or by your own initiative to vary from the standard practice and direct that the two cases be considered concurrently, and my understanding is the applicant may be requesting that this evening. That concludes staff's comments. Following the applicant's comments and the public hearing, staff will be available for questions on both the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning.
Thank you, Ms. Spearman. At this time, I'll invite the applicant forward.
Good evening. My name is Doug Ledson. This is a project I've been working on for a couple of years now. When we started this out, we actually looked at residential. We had a neighborhood meeting, and what we were looking at is a senior housing facility. There was a great concern raised about that. The concern that was raised was that, one, with being three-story, we didn't want anybody, young or seniors, looking down in the backyards. The other was still some traffic considerations of connecting it into Gordon Street, because it would have to be connected in there because there's no other way out other than Kilmaine, and they wanted two entranceways. We looked at, as you can see from the present zoning, it allows varied types of zoning, from retail to the recreational, all sorts of uses. The neighbors did not, were not excited about having any type of retail use, and absolutely nothing with restaurants, primarily because of the use on the weekends, activity late in the evenings, et cetera. And likewise, with retail having a lot of activity on the weekend, so where we talk about, wow, there's a chance we could redevelop this whole thing in 20 or 30 years from now, I don't know if that's really conducive for this neighborhood. It's a very quiet neighborhood, and there's a lot, a lot of concerns from the adjacent neighbors as to what the use would be. And when we looked at all the varied uses, including, you know, even a, one of those sports facilities, athletic clubs, whatever, you know, so many of them are way in the evening all the time over the weekend, people driving in and out all the time, so the neighbors were very sensitive to having any type of traffic at all. So with that, I kind of put things on the back burner, kind of looked at different ideas, even looked at doing an office. There was There was a lot of concern even raised about that. And the reason being is, again, the activity, even though the office is, for the most part, nine to five, you also have where maintenance comes in in the evening or on the weekends, and then still potentially having activity coming down Gordon Street. So I got contacted by a storage facility, and the first facility that contacted me, I just said, "Not interested." The second facility that contacted me, I again said, "Nah, I don't see any use for that in that area. It just doesn't fit for the neighborhood." And they said, "Well, we're not talking about a normal, what you might be thinking in your head of what a storage facility is." I said, "Well, what are you talking about?" They said, "Well, we built two of them right here in Cary." I said, "Okay." And they said, "Well, these don't look like anything you've seen before in the storage, those mom-and-pop storage facilities." So I said, "Okay, well, look, I'll go and take a look at them." And when I did, I said, "I would never know those were storage facilities. One looks like an office, the other one looks kind of almost like an apartment." He said, "Yeah, but you have next to no activity." I said, "Hmm." I said, "Well, that's interesting." I said, "So what are you proposing?" He said, "One building for the main storage facility, something with next to no traffic, and something that looks like an office." I said, "Let's talk." We all got together, discussed it, and I said, "Well, we're going to draw up a neighborhood meeting, and we're going to show what you've done and see what everybody thinks." And that's what we did. So we had a meeting over at the Cary Art Center, and we discussed things, and we showed them two present facilities, which some of you might be familiar with, in Cary. This is off of Davis Drive, and the second one is over around the crossroads.
This is the one by the crossroads. You understand the microphone?
This is the one by the crossroads. This is the one off of Davis Drive, the closest thing you can get to Preston. If you look at this, this doesn't look like a storage facility. And what's nice about it is we have something that really looks good because we appreciate that sensitivity of values in the neighborhood. This is not just industrial. We've conditioned it so there's only two uses, only. We've gotten rid of everything except, not just a storage facility, but only without overhead doors, as you saw in that zoning. We've limited the height, but the other issue, and please excuse me as I keep reaching down here, missing this microphone, but after talking to the neighbors and saying, "Well, what are you looking for?", we actually came up with a plan. Now, we understand that as it goes through planning, that they can make some changes and deviations on this, but we're hoping that they're going to go along with the plan because it's, one, we feel that will add value to the neighborhood because it's an attractive building with no traffic. The average hourly amount of traffic, I think it's three cars per hour. It's nothing. So that's one thing that the neighbors really were excited about, but the other is, and this is a rendering done just for this site that we've already done, that looks like an office. And they said, "Well, can we have it look like a two-story?" So sure, let's put the roof for the third story. So I guess the point I'm making is that after numerous conversations, and it wasn't just the meetings which we had starting two years ago, and then we had another one, then we also had another meeting here at the town council, which was required, where we had some people that hadn't been to any of our previous meetings to get an understanding of this. And I'm going to tell you, there was deep concern about the industrial use, especially one person, but I know some of the other people that hadn't been here, they were wondering, "Well, what if this thing closes down? I mean, are we going to get some kind of a manufacturing facility going in or some kind of a dump site or whatever?" And we said, "This is limited to this and this alone. The only other thing we can do is do an office." The only reason why I've got an office is that in order to make this viable, we have to have so many square feet. If we put so many restrictions on here that we can't build this, I want to be able to go back with an office. So that's the only reason why that's on there. The buyers are committed to this. They put a lot of time and money in this already. This is the only use that I've found that the neighbors have been comfortable with. I mean, their favorite thing would be woods forever and make a park out of it, but they said, outside of that, this is the best thing that we could think because of the light amount of traffic. The other issue we had was its proximity to the houses themselves. An office, you're at 40 feet. Again, there's no guarantee on this site plan that we've done, tentative site plan, because the planning can change it, but we've set this building almost twice as far away. We've got a minimum of 70 feet on one end and even further on the other end away from the residences because this, they said, "Anything you can do, the further away from us, the better." And that's what we've done. So all I'm getting at here is that we've had several meetings and discussions and emails and everything else to come up with something that will, one, keep the value of their homes and add to it. This is a climate-controlled, the entrance are double doors to even get in. Now, normally, where you see this type of facility, it draws on what we call a higher-end client because they cost more. Because of that, and the buyers here, they feel that this neighborhood is going to be upgrading further and further. Other developments they've done have been throughout the southeast, Canada, et cetera, and some of these are in the highest-dollar neighborhoods you can imagine. And the reason being is that they don't negatively impact the value because it doesn't look like any type of industrial facility. This basically gives someone an office appearance with almost no traffic impact on adjacent neighbors. So I guess that's the main issues here, and the reason why we're asking for them to go in conjunction is that the whole issue here is to get this zoning. I mean, the fact that it's in an activity center, the end result, and this is what, of course, even the neighbors are concerned about, is that for me to have eliminated all the other potential commercial uses has been a critical issue. And I will tell you, from the neighborhood meeting, there's been one issue that's come up, and we're not here to discuss it, but I'm here to make you aware of it. And that is, the biggest issue that was brought up here was the Gordon Street connector. And I want to let, we're going to be letting the whole town council know that if the zoning is approved directly after it, we will be going for a quasi-judicial hearing to deal with that issue because it is an important issue to neighbors that was brought up by numerous people. So if you have any questions.
This is your time, not ours. This is not two ways. So one way.
Okay, sorry. Well, I think that is, for the most part, everything we're dealing with. We have one of the partners.
We have to open the public hearing before anybody else can speak. Only one speaking for the applicant.
Excuse me.
Sure. Anything else?
I think that's it. Again, as I told you, we just tried to come up with something that was compatible for the neighborhood, minimum impact on the neighborhood as far as, and also something that would not negatively impact values. We hope we've done that. We hope you agree we've done that. But that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Ms. Bierman, anything to add before we open the public hearing?
I would just like to make one comment, a comment that we frequently make during the public hearing process. There have been some more detailed comments made regarding the description of the particular use, the elevations and the site plan, and just to point out to you that the only thing that the town can enforce beyond the standard conditions of the requirements of the zoning ordinance is what is actually in the zoning conditions.
Exactly. In other words, it was illustrative only.
That's correct.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, in case you saw the light flashing, I wasn't giving him any extra time. The public hearing hasn't started. The light was inadvertently turned on, and that's why I let him go. When the public hearing opens, we have five minutes to speak. Okay, so now's the time for the public hearing for 15 CPA 10 and 15 REZ 26, and I want to invite the first speaker forward.
Good evening, members of the town council. My name is Jonathan Dorman. I'm with Four Store Development, and we are working with Mr. Ledson as the applicant. We are the developer of this project. And I just wanted to introduce myself, let you know I'm here if you have any questions. I want to thank Mr. Ledson. He did a very thorough presentation, and as you can see, he's very hands-on when it comes to a landowner. We've worked very extensively with both Mr. Ledson and with the neighbors and have really put a lot of effort into making this the best possible project for this location. So we appreciate your consideration of our requests, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Curtis. I live at 213 Rose Street, and I live in a house that has been occupied by my wife's family since 1963. And so we may be the longest residents in that neighborhood longstanding. My wife grew up in that house. We renovated it and added on to it in 2010, and we live there currently with my mother-in-law, Hetty Stallings-Wilson. She's 92 years old and would have been here tonight, except that she was afraid she might miss the state basketball game. And she's a big fan. So we have a real interest and investment in this community and this in particular, and in the Bertrose neighborhood. We've invested heavily in it and hope to see that our investment is not deteriorating any. And it may have been our preference to see that area, as Mr. Ledson said, remain wooded and unoccupied. However, there are some downsides to that because we do have some people who camp out in that area and some, we suspect, dealing with illicit substances that goes on in that area between the park and the back end of the shopping center behind there. So something that would make good use of that area is, I'm speaking for myself, not for the whole neighborhood, but what Mr. Ledson has proposed is probably as good a deal as we could hope for. If it couldn't remain undeveloped or if it couldn't be added, if it could have been added to the park that exists at the end of Rose Street there, that would have been nice, but that's something that we understand the city is not interested in doing. So given what we understand to be the plan for this upper-end storage facility, it's probably, it's something that I could support, my family could support. I've discussed it with my wife and with Hetty, my mother-in-law. She went to one of the earlier hearings, and I've shown her the plans and the drawings. So we're speaking in support of this change, hoping, of course, that that is exactly what will happen and not something else, not that we are hearing what the plan is and that something else then happens once the zoning has changed. As long as it goes ahead with the plan that Mr. Ledson has showed you, that's acceptable. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
How do y'all do? My name is Ron Harris. I live at 201 Rose Street. My property backs up right to where that residential section on the thing is. So I'm well within 800 feet. Mr. Ledson said it'd be my preference to keep it in woods. I've been there for 40 years, and it's been wooded, and I'd like to keep it that way or if not that, have a park through there. But if not, his plan is what I support. As long as it doesn't change, that storage facility has my approval. Like, he needs my approval. It's the best deal I can get, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Bowder, 922 Devon Avenue. That's the lollipop just north of the site. I'm going to echo my previous speakers. I also want to commend Mr. Ledson on the brevity of his presentation. He's had several presentations to practice this, and his first one with the Housing for the Elderly did not fly well at all. And this is, as we can all agree, a much better option than what we were provided. Concern expressed by others in the meetings that he's had, as well as my own, although there is no obvious drainage issues, this is receiving a lot of off-flow from the Mayfair Plaza back lot. So their land planning has to accommodate that, and their retention pond will probably need to expand. He's promised a 30 or more-foot buffer between the residences of trees, undisturbed buffer, and we're looking forward to that as well. And we're also aware of the fact that the illegal commercial activities will probably subside once this building goes in. We also are hoping that the Gordon Street connector may remain just pedestrian-only or less. Thank you.
Thank you.
How y'all doing tonight? My name's Wesley Claytor, relatively new to the area, relatively new to the whole process that's going on here. But my wife and I just bought 207 Gordon Street, and that's the last property that actually makes contact to the property that we're speaking about. We bought the house because we liked the privacy. It's a dead end there. We just had a baby girl, and we were hoping to keep a house that was a low-traffic area for her safety. And when we found out about this, we were a little let down because we were worried about property values, first-time homeowners. We thought we were making a good investment in Cary. So when Doug Ledson let us know about all this, we heard him out, and obviously... So when Doug Ledson let us know about all this, you know, we heard him out, and obviously, like everyone else said, you know, if it was woods, that would be great, but that's not the case. So just wanted to express that I am in full support of what he's proposing. I hope we can get that passed through, and just thank you for your time. Thanks for hearing us out.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good evening. My name is Suzy Langdon, and my father is a resident of 202 Southwest Maynard, which is the little kick-out here listed on the diagram. 26 years ago, he bought the home because it had a lovely wooded area next door. Now, at 91, he's not so much concerned about the wood that's next door, but is interested in what his property value is, basically, because that's what he, the funds there, what he's going to have to sustain his life. He was happy to know that something such as this type of a facility could possibly be impacting him, which is exactly right on his property line, and wanted to show, and so I'm here representing his support for this idea. Okay?
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dawn Westbrook, and I live at 204 Gordon, which is just on the other side of the other residential lot, the 202 that's vacant currently. And I grew up in Cary on Knight Avenue next to the Gold Godbolts, and I really love living in Cary. Sorry, my voice goes in and out. I'm not upset or anything. I just wanted to come down and show my support for Doug's proposed use of that land. And like Wes said, as long as we can keep Gordon a non-connector, because that's exactly why we chose our house as well, I just wanted to let you know of our support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Mike Grishan. I live in Bertrose. I'm opposed to changing the zoning as it stands now. I believe that our property values will benefit greatly from retail and the expansion of the Mayfair Plaza Shopping Center in that area. As you'll note, there are only six residents abutting that property, and I'm sure some kind of a buffer can be arranged for those residents. Also, as far as access is concerned, if you'll notice, Kilmaine will provide a direct entrance to the new shopping center. Also, with the, there's a creek back there, drainage. Apparently, it's not zoned in any way as a 100-year flood plain, so in that case, it can be easily taken care of by the developer and water issues taken care of. I just want to state my opinion that we shouldn't change the zoning in that area and leave it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for this public hearing? Anyone at all? Going to close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions and comments, but before I do that, I've listed several things, I want staff to come up, listed several things that I heard. I want to be clear and make sure everyone else is clear on light industrial comprehensive plan amendment use. I'm looking for worst-case scenario. My job is not to look at the best-case scenario, but the worst-case scenario to protect the citizens. What's the worst thing that can go there with a CPA of light industrial that you can think of? Well, most intrusive to a resident-
It's conditioned for storage in it.
Rezoning is, right?
Right.
I'm not talking about rezoning. I'm talking about comprehensive plan amendment. He could rezonate, he could leave tomorrow, somebody else come in and rezonate, you know?
We still have to approve that rezoning.
That's right. But I want to know about the comprehensive plan amendment for industrial, light industrial.
Right. That zoning, the, pardon me, that land use plan category covers things, for example, like a lot of the light industrial you'll see on Chapel Hill Road heading east from the downtown. So it could be, you know, heavy equipment, repair, storage. You can do heavy, so heavy repair, vehicle repair, material storage, fabrication, you know, light fabrication, warehousing, warehousing and distribution.
Okay. That's all I need.
So those are all things that fit that category.
Okay.
So everything, everything industrial except smokestack industry.
Okay. Very good. So now I have several questions about the rezoning proposal. So, conditions of this rezoning. First of all, the plans he's shown is not a condition. What has he made a condition? Everything else we have to ignore. Everything he's told residents is not enforceable. What is a condition?
The conditions would limit the land use to, for a mini-storage use, it would be a limit of 100,000 square feet. If the property was developed for office instead, an office use would be a maximum of 18,000 square feet, and the difference between those square footages is based on traffic.
So if this were rezoned with those conditions, he could build either one, and it doesn't have to look anything like what we've seen.
Correct. It doesn't have to look like the elevations. It would have to meet the town's design standards, architectural standards, but beyond the minimum architectural standards requirements, we could not guarantee that exact look.
And that's very important, because that wouldn't even come back to council. That would be just the right to develop. If he had the rezoning with those requests, with that CPA amendment, he could build office any way he wants it to look, build a storage unit any way he wants it to look, except for conditions he's offered.
That's correct.
Roll-up doors was one of those conditions, right?
I'm sorry?
No roll-up doors.
That's correct. That we would require there to be, the only access into the units would be from a central door into the building. There would be no exterior roll-up type doors that you see in some of the mini-storage facilities.
Okay.
And also, there is a maximum height limit, both in terms of stories and number of feet.
Okay. It's also important that a plan, people understand that a plan says, this is what is intended to go there. That doesn't mean it can be built. The rezoning says, this is the type of thing that can go there. And those are two different things, so it's important that people understand that. Now, the current zoning is retail or general commercial, which will allow retail. What else will general commercial allow?
There are a number of different uses allowed in general commercial, including office, office-type uses are allowed in commercial, but there are, there is a variety of commercial, personal service-type uses.
And buffers are required between different types of uses. What is the minimum buffer required between a general commercial use and the residence there with today's zoning?
With, I'm not certain that distance. I believe it's probably, probably a 40-foot.
65.
65.
65-foot opaque?
Opaque, yes.
Okay. Water issues?
Can I just, and what is between industrial, so that we get both? Light industrial.
For industrial, between mini-storage and residential, adjacent to the residential, the minimum buffer width is 65, a 65-type foot, type A buffer. Adjacent, if it was developed for office, the minimum use would be, or the minimum buffer would be 40-foot type A. So even looking at a commercial uses, with the district, you have to hone down to the specific use, because the buffer can vary within a district depending on the actual use.
And then the other thing, which I hesitate to talk about, but it's important to understand that connector roads are required, and it's up to the applicant to ask for a waiver with that. And that would be done in a quasi-judicial hearing, in which we cannot discuss that at all before the hearing. We can't talk to anyone. We can't talk to each other. I can't talk to my wife about it. We can't talk to anyone, and all evidence has to be presented at that hearing. So that's very important for everyone to understand. We can't require him to ask for that waiver. That would, he would have to do that. And he said he intends to do that, but it's very important that everyone understand that. That is out of our control until it comes to a quasi-judicial hearing. So those are some of the comments I heard, that I wanted to make sure that everyone in the audience has a better understanding of that. And now I want to open it up to my colleagues. Ms. Frams?
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, thank you for those clarifications. They are very helpful. And the reason the mayor spoke about that is, over the years, we've been showing a lot of pretty pictures, and sometimes we didn't get what the picture showed. So we're always a little gun-shy on that. Just because we see something doesn't mean that's going to be exactly the end product. So by the time this comes back for decision, what I'm looking for is something that, some better conditions that give us the assurance that what we see is actually what we're going to get. The connectivity is a good point as well. We can't require him to do that. That would have to come for a special quasi-judicial hearing, a whole other council meeting, and a whole other process. So I do like the conditions regarding, you know, limiting it to mini-storage, the size, height, and all that kind of stuff. The additional buffer between the residents, I think, is nice. The conditions about no exterior roll-up doors. I actually applaud the applicant for working on this and trying to find something that the residents would accept. I remember going to a meeting in the Bertrose community a couple of years ago regarding a assisted-living-type facility. It was very clear to me that that was not acceptable. We've talked about some other things on this property over the years, townhomes, a water tower, some other things. To come up with something that I think that the community actually supports, that's yeoman's work, so I applaud the applicant for that, I really do. But I think at the end of the day, we are looking for assurances that what you are saying you're going to do is what gets done. How you do that, that's on you. We can't tell you what to do, how to do it. You just, I think that those types of assurances would go a long way towards, at least addressing or satisfying some of my concerns. Changing the land use plan, yeah. I mean, to me, the zoning is where the rubber hits the road, you know? So that's pretty much my comment.
Other comments?
Yeah. If, I guess you asked me to come up with a list of things that I thought would be a good use of that site. Mini-storage would not be on the list, but it's a very intriguing presentation, and I'm sure willing to keep an open mind on this. As far as some of the things that we were shown, if there are conditions that could be added for some of that, and I don't know whether there is, and you'd have to work with the staff on that, Mr. Ledson, but if there are additional conditions that you would offer to give more assurance, I would suggest you try to do that. Some things are not conditionable, and you can't do that at this point, but certain things may be. So, you know, I would suggest maybe looking at doing that. Addressing the question, and maybe it's premature, of these things going together to planning and zoning, but I'm not one to deviate normally from our regular process, but I think in this case, I would support going together. Because if we just sent the comprehensive plan amendment first and it said light industrial, I mean, that opens up a whole bunch of things, and I could see the planning and zoning board and us even saying just no to that without knowing that it was going to be a mini-storage, but that's attached to the rezoning. So I really see both going together makes the most sense.
Actually, you could have the CPA approve and withdraw the rezoning.
You could do that also, which would be not a good thing.
So, I mean, personally, I'd like to see them separate. I want them discussed individually, but, you know, I'm one vote. Other comments, questions?
For me, you brought up most of the questions that I had. I was most concerned with the buffer between light industrial and the neighbors and the 65-foot opaque. Makes me feel a little bit better. I have to say, these, the folks who live there know better than me what they want. I was very intrigued by staff's presentation about site suitability, because if I looked at that as well, I thought, oh, you know, I'd want homes next to homes if I were living there. But I don't, I don't live there. And so for the, all these homeowners making the trek down here to tell us what they want, especially, most especially, the ones that are adjacent to this property that does speak volumes and, you know, it's a Wednesday night, yeah. So to come in here and take their time and give us that information is very valuable. I'm concerned. I'm concerned because we have had developers back out and halfway through, or we've had developers come to us and say, well, this is the way it's supposed to look, and given us a picture and shown us a pretty picture, and it doesn't show up like that. And if it's next to your house, that's when it worries me. It's on the street, it's on Davis Drive, you know? It's one thing, but it's right next to your house, your biggest investment in your entire life, and that's when it worries me. So I just want the homeowners to really get what they expect, and if this is the best that they think that they can expect, I take their input very, it's very important to me, so I appreciate that.
Other comments?
Did I hear that this will be, they'll pay for the light at Kilmaine to be coming out as well, because that light's going to have to be changed? It's a three-way light. The light will have to be changed if Kilmaine connects. Did I not?
The transportation staff can speak to those improvements.
Is now the time to ask that? Or is that later?
Sure. I haven't seen any specific proposal for access to the site, but I'm assuming it's going to have to go opposite that, and if it does, the state DOT is going to require another signal head on that approach. So that'll have to be the expense of the developer for that, that work.
Okay. And then when I looked at that big aerial, and especially after doing the work session last night, considering a different part of town, I just don't see a use that the neighbors, if the neighbors are all in favor of something like this, I could think of other things to go there, but if this is what they want and they've got to live beside it, I'd like Lori, I believe this is a, it's great to hear that from them, that they've worked something out. I love it when they work it out.
Other comments, questions? So the only other, the planning and zoning board will review both of these. The only other question is whether we send them together or send them separately. I think I'm the only one that expressed interest in sending them separately, and if that's the case, we'll send them together unless somebody else wants to speak up stating that. We don't need a motion to send them forward, so we're going to send both of these to planning and zoning board for their review and their recommendation. All right. Thank you, Ms. Spearman. We now move to our discussion items. The first discussion item is item 6.1, consideration of a resolution of support. Connect North Carolina bond. Mr. George, this is your item. I'll ask you to make your comments.
Yeah, I appreciate earlier Ms. Gates speaking out in favor of the $2 billion Connect NC bond issue in addition to the education funds and the work for Wake Tech and NC State University that'll benefit from it. I guess selfishly, being in the tech field, I would like to see more people trained in the technical realm, but there's also money included for cities and counties for clean water, and I think that's a big thing going forward with our population. So, Mr. Mayor, I do thank you for the opportunity to let me voice my personal support for this, and it's on the agenda tonight because it's coming up with the primary election, which is way earlier than normal. So we've only got, what, a month and a half, six weeks before this happens, so I appreciate your letting me speak to this tonight.
Other council members want to comment on this?
Just one thing. I think one of the things that it's important is, I did look it up, and I think there's two things that, from my perspective, that are important for citizens to know, is one is, I think a lot of people are looking at this primary election and thinking, I'm not going to vote, or I don't care, or the guy I want's already going to win, guy being guy or gal, is going to win, and I don't think I'm going to show up. And this is a really important line item on the ballot. So a lot of people think, oh, I don't vote in primaries. And-
Unaffiliated voters.
Unaffiliated voters often think, I can't vote in a primary, which is absolutely ludicrous. You can. You absolutely can, and personally, I believe you should. And this is a really important thing. So people should absolutely know that there's a $2 billion, 2B with a B, bond referendum on the ballot, that they should come out and make a decision whether they want to vote yea or nay, and-
And another important thing about it is, they say that there will be no increased taxes associated with it. So those two things are important. The thing that I just want to make a comment is, I think folks should look at the projects that are on there. There are projects across the state, in, I think, most counties across the state. There's no direct projects for Cary, having looked at all the bond line items. There's some things that impact us because they're in Wake, but that doesn't mean you shouldn't vote. So, in the, in the past, we haven't had these discussions at the table, but it's, I think the most important thing is for residents to know that this bond referendum is at the primary time. I can't remember the last time we had one like that.
Yeah, I can't remember either.
It's kind of a little hidden vote, if you were to be a little paranoid about it.
Cary's had a bond referendum in the past in odd times, but not in state.
I couldn't remember. Yeah, not in state.
But it was May back then. It was at May, not at the
Yeah, I was trying to figure, I was looking back four or five years, and I couldn't find it.
Anything else?
There's going to be a lot of interest in this year's primary.
Well, I think a lot of unaffiliated voters, of which there's what, 38% in Cary or maybe close to 40%?
Both parties are dropping people like flies.
Yeah, exactly. I'm surrounded by unaffiliated voters, exactly. Might think that they don't get to vote.
No, I know I get to vote.
But I think a lot of the average, a lot of the average unaffiliated voter might not think they
No, it's definitely not average.
I would consider above average, since they're unaffiliated.
Ooh, snap.
Mr. Mayor, can we move on?
So, bringing this back to what we're discussing, any other comments about this bond coming in March? Thank you, Mr. George, for bringing this forward.
Thank you for the discussion.
Okay. We're going to move to our next item. Item 6.2 is take action on issuance resolution. Am I reading the right thing? Oh, yeah. Sorry. Item 6.2, take action of issuance resolution to provide for the refunding of general obligation bonds. Ms. Huber will present the item, and council may take action. The lady with the golden fingers that sends us lots of money. Please, tell us.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Tonight, staff proposes that council take action to authorize the issuance of a general obligation refunding bond, which will result in debt service savings of over $1 million over the next 14 years. The refinancing of general obligation bonds is accomplished through a multi-step process. As you'll recall, at the January 14th council meeting, council approved a preliminary findings resolution and introduced and approved a bond order. On January 17th, the bond order was published in the Cary News to provide for a 30-day comment period as required by state statute. Town staff continues to have ongoing conversations with our financial advisors, Davenport, to ensure the savings continue to remain above the town's minimum policy to proceed with the refinancing. Should the market conditions change, the town does have the option to postpone the sale until market conditions improve. However, we don't expect that to happen. The next step in the process is for the town council to approve a resolution providing for the sale and issuance of a town of Cary, North Carolina, general obligation refunding bond, Series 2016A. This resolution makes certain findings and declarations, and also provides the details of the refunding transaction. The resolution also authorizes specific town staff to execute and deliver all documents related to the refinancing. After tonight, the next step in the process is for the local government commission to consider approval of the town's refinancing request at their meeting next Tuesday, February 2nd. Once the 30-day comment period on the bond order is complete, town staff plans to close the transaction on February 18th with the bank. Staff recommends that council adopt the issuance resolution for the refinancing of general obligation bonds. Thank you.
So, so the way I understand this, put this in layman's terms, you and your team want to save taxpayers over $1 million, and you're asking, are we okay with it?
Yes. And that it's okay to issue the bond.
It's not a tough decision for me. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Well, in discussion, I want to say thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if you don't know, she, her boss comes before us most of the time. But this lady and her team are always saving taxpayers money, and we really appreciate your work. It's, it's not just once in a lifetime. I know you've been, or your team has been up here, saving us money over and over and over. We really appreciate that, and our taxpayers appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It passes unanimously, including Ms. Robinson. You just approved the
Just so you know.
We now move to item 6.3, Hollybrook rezoning, 15 REZ 22. Ms. Beerman is going to give us a report. We're going to hear from our planning and zoning board representative, and council may take action. Ms. Beerman?
This is, this is a request to rezone about 71 acres on Hollybrook Drive and other streets within the Hollybrook subdivision. Properties located on Kildare Farm Road, the intersection to Holly Springs Road, to Holly Springs Road is a short distance to the south, and also Stevenson Road is located to the This shows the current corporate limits. This property was annexed into the town by action of the North Carolina Legislature in June of 2015. Currently, there is no zoning on the property. The applicant in this case is the town of Cary for the purpose of facilitating the rezoning request and making sure we get zoning applied to the property as quickly as possible. The homeowners and the homeowners association provided input regarding the specific zoning districts requested. As I mentioned, the, there is no existing zoning on the site. Prior to annexation by the state, it was zoned R-30 in Wake County. The proposed zoning districts include R-12, R-20, R-40, and RR, which is Resource Recreation in the dark green color. These zoning districts reflect the existing land uses and lot sizes within most of the subdivision, with the exception of a 12-acre site, shown in yellow, that is currently owned by the Hollybrook Sewer. The zoning district proposed for this parcel is R-12. This request has changed from R-8 to R-12 since the public hearing, based on feedback at the initial public hearing and feedback at the planning and zoning board meeting. This shows the land use plan designations for the subdivision, which include low-density residential, medium-density residential, and parks and open space. There are some stream buffers shown on the site, and these largely coincide with the Resource Recreation area and are undeveloped. This shows the transportation plan in the, in the area. Kildare Farm Road is a major thoroughfare. Stevenson Road is a minor thoroughfare, and then Hollybrook Drive, which doesn't connect all the way through to Stevenson, but it is Collector Road. There have been some concerns expressed by the neighborhood to the north, Kildare Estates. Y'all, you heard some of those at Public Speaks Out this evening. We have received two protest petitions, or two petitions from the, the neighborhood to the north, signed by a number of those residents, requesting at this point that it be rezoned to R-40 instead as a placeholder, so that when the property is actually developed in the future, they would come forward with a separate rezoning request. And at this time, I would call on Mr. Evangelista to present the planning and zoning board recommendation.
And while he's coming up here, since he was mentioned in some of the comments, I want to straighten that out about the placeholder. It's important to figure out how, or not figure out, explain how this all came about. Usually, someone's annexed, and we give the closest town zoning we have to the county zoning, and that's an R-40. Well, the legislature did this one, and we didn't have any control over that, so we have no zoning. So normally, we put a placeholder zoning. Not Mr. Evangelista. He has nothing to do with this. It's all the way we do our business in town. We put the placeholder zoning there. What Mr. Evangelista does is lead a citizens group to give us a recommendation based on the rules and regulations we have. And I just want to make sure that that's clear, that Mr. Evangelista had nothing, Mr. Evangelista had nothing to do with the zoning or the placeholder. So, having said that, you're up.
I feel so insignificant, all of us. Before, I brought this one slide up, 67. Before we get into that yellow area, the P&amp;C Board unanimously endorsed all the other zonings. Put those in, let them get started on getting their services through. They were no brainers. The R-12 had three opinions. You've heard a lot about one of them. But let me talk about the two minority opinions first, really quickly. The original request was for an R-8. And the HOA, or, or some version of the HOA that owns the property, had made a very impassioned plea with us that they would like to get an R-8, which makes the property as attractive to a seller as, or to a buyer as possible, so they can get this thing sold, because they're going to use a lot of that funding to pay for all the services that they have to bring in here. One of our members was very empathetic towards that case and said, you know, this is a good faith request, they need our help, let's give them the R-8. So that was one, one of the no votes for the R-12. The other one, which you've heard time and time again, is this R-40. And the reason for the R-40 request was, okay, we'll call it a placeholder. There's county R-30s nearby that are not in Cary. But most importantly, we've heard at, at our public hearing, and you've heard quite a bit here too, there's an awful lot of input in the neighbor, neighborhood for this, for this zoning. And to put an R-12 on, the town being the applicant, we can't put any conditions on. So we put in R-12, we put in R-8 or whatever. It's an unconditioned, here you go. Here's your zoning. Typically, we see someone come forward with a couple of conditions, talk to the neighborhood. Nothing does my heart better than to hear an applicant come forward with the neighborhood arm-in-arm, saying we worked out our differences. To put a placeholder on here and let someone who's optioning the property come in after talking to these folks, and, and come in with some conditions, maybe for where the road's going to go, or whatever, I don't really know, would be worth entertaining. That was another minority, one vote. Everyone else said, let's get this moving. R-12's a good in-between. You look in those areas, and it fits. It's not, not too far out. It's, it's splitting the difference mostly between the R-20 and the R-8s. So, it's, it's not a bad medium. And the fact that it has no conditions on it, well, that's just part of the deal. That was what was approved at 4 to 2.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation.
Well done, yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Evangelista? Thank you.
So my significance levels
Skywriting.
So I have questions for Ms. Beerman. I heard comments earlier about R-12. They took the acreage and then did the math directly with the R-12. That did not include buffers, streets, anything else, did it?
No, it didn't. One, the factor that would affect, that would most affect the lot count, I think, would be the streets, accounting for the streets. If you take a conservative estimate of about 15% of the site out for, just for streets, which is probably even a low estimate, but if that assumption is made, and then the rest of the property did not have any constraints on it, then conceivably, based on a numerical formula with just dividing out the lot sizes, I think that the most you could get on the property would be probably 35, 30 to 35 lots.
Okay.
Taking tho, taking those constraints into account. But the gross densities and multiplying those numbers out does not account at all for roads or, or any mandatory buffers that are required.
And the only other question, comment, I'm going to test your memory here. R-40, the ones I remember in town that are developed, are usually refurbishing an existing house that sits on an acre lot. I don't, I can't remember any new housing in an R-40 zoning within town, except out toward Jordan Lake. Can you help me remember any others?
The, I mean, typically, we don't get, for residential development, we don't get R-40 zonings. The only one that I can recall, having worked on myself in the last couple of years, was one where someone actually had a non-residential district and wanted to move a house onto that lot, and rezoned it to R-40 in order to allow a house. And that was out in the, more in the western part of town.
Okay. Those are my questions. I'll open it up.
I have no questions, I have a comment.
Okay.
Does anybody have questions first? I have a question about the, we talked a lot about connectivity, about where a road might go. Is that something, or please explain to all the folks that are here, how and when that discussion occurs.
That is something that would occur at the time of the development plan. At this point, with any rezoning, unless there is an actual concept plan submitted with the rezoning, which we haven't had that case happen since we've had that provision, the ordinance. The, all the access issues are addressed at the time of the site plan. Obviously, there would need to be, a road would need to be extended into the site to provide access to the land area. In terms of how many access points and where those would be, we don't have that, we wouldn't know that with any certainty at this point. There are certainly limitations as to where any potential roads could go. But that, that is something that is addressed through a subdivision plan.
And just to follow up on that, and that is not a council decision unless we go to a quasi judicial hearing.
Well, the quasi judicial is based on connectivity, where you require the connective adjacent
Right. I thought this was what you were talking about.
No, it's talking about
Site plan.
Yeah, site plan.
Oh, just site plan.
But in, in terms of just the subdivision layout.
Okay.
And I think, you know, there, there are limited points, I think, at which you could get access into this property. And that's something that would need to be looked at based on the topography and the location of streams, to, to try to fit a road into this area to, to provide access within that area.
Okay. Other comments? Your comment? Sorry.
I have a comment, no question.
Okay.
Anybody have a question before I go on?
Well, maybe a little clarification that I didn't get ahead of time, but, so if I'm understanding it right, that if it were R-40, like some would be asking for, then they have to come back probably to do anything with it.
The applicant.
Well, you could build a house, one house per acre.
Okay.
It matches the land use plan, which is low density, which is one to three houses an acre. So, it would match that, so they would need, what, they could build the one house, or they could come back if they wanted more density.
They could build 12, 12 and a half houses. They could build 12 houses, basically, or I guess less than that, 11 houses, because you have to take out for the street. Or the, or an applicant could come back and go through a rezoning process where he or she would enter in conditions that would, that would speak to the concerns that the neighboring residents have.
And the drawback to, to doing that is the time and the, that it's got to come back again, that we, because we would see it again, or somebody would see it again for rezoning again, if they did R-40.
It's really not a downside for us as a, as the governing body. It doesn't matter to us if this comes back one time, no time, one time, 50 times. It doesn't really matter so much. It, the argument made is that it matters to the person who owns, the entity that owns this land.
Because they could do it quicker, or they could
That they could sell it quicker, because it's already entitled.
Okay.
Ms. Robinson?
Okay. Here's my comment. All right. I look at this, and I think about how I would feel if I lived in one of the neighboring properties, because they're all fairly large lots. To its, to the south, you have these R-20 lots, and then to the west, you have houses that are at least R-20, but potentially could have been, you know, even larger than that. And then, to your east, you have green space. So even though you do have R-8 lots over there, you have this big buffer. So, I think, how, you know, how would I feel if somebody was coming in and doing this rezoning? To me, I would want the opportunity to work with the applicant, the person who's going to develop this, and help shape it so that it complements my community as much as possible. By having us go in and rezon this at R-12 and allow for 35 houses, it's giving a blanket entitlement to the applicant, and it takes away the neighbor's opportunity to communicate to the applicant or to the builder to say, hey, this is important to us, you know, we'd like you to put in some conditions that respect this particular element, whether it's buffers or, you know, larger lots, near large lots, and that kind of thing. If this had come in to me at an R-20, then I'd say, okay, I'm okay with that. Because at R-20, I would feel pretty good about that being entitled, those are pretty decent-sized lots, it would be up against these large lots. But at R-12, 35 units put into this space, I would have a lot of heartache if I was a neighboring resident. neighboring resident. It would be very upsetting to me to see that my community changed so dramatically. So I can't support an R-12 zoning on this little segment here. I could support R-20, or I could go with the R-40 if we really wanted to just have a holding pattern and let the, whoever wants to develop this come in and entitle it in a responsive manner as we typically get. But I can't support the R-12.
Other comments?
Can we use an R-20? I thought, we went right to R-40.
Well, we do have an R-20 zoning district and it's up to the council. You can rezone it to any district that's less intensive than what was originally advertised. So you could rezone to R-12, R-20, or R-40.
We could do that now even though the applicant hasn't asked.
That's correct.
Because the applicant is the town.
At this time, we are the applicant.
You want me to ask?
That's a great point.
I think it's, I guess I'll make some comments. I think it's interesting that originally the subdivision who came to the town, right, because they want to sell, they want to sell this land, asked originally for R-8. They wanted it more dense. And then the planning and zoning board, and correct me if I'm wrong, the planning and zoning board along with feedback from the residents, et cetera, said, no, no, let's push it back over to R-12. Right? And there is some predictability. And the HOA came to us to ask for this. So we're not, we're not pushing this on them. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So this was a request from the homeowners association that wants to get some money out of this in order to pay for all their services. So the people who most affects made the compromise. You weren't here for that.
Well, no, I disagree. They're one-third of the people affected. You have people to the north and you have people to the west that are not the applicants that are directly affected.
Sorry, they were all up here together. You weren't here for the.
Yeah, I wasn't here for public.
So they were, and they compromised together. So there were, minus a few people.
No, I don't think so.
Minus a few people who were, minus a few people who absolutely disagreed, from Kildare Estates, absolutely, who disagreed. So there was a large number of them, I guess, that stood up and are from the various neighborhoods. So I don't, I think there's some predictability associated with an R-12 that the homeowners association asked for. I'm not saying which way I'm going to vote. I'm just being, just the.
Thinking it through.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, I talked to think. But there is, there is absolutely some concern on both sides. But we're talking about whether it was originally came in as R-8, now we're at R-12, and now we're deciding, do we go to R-20 or R-40? Right? So somewhere, Ken, let me finish. So somewhere along that line is the right answer for that. And it's about us figuring out what that number is, I believe.
If I understand correctly, and I know they're not supposed to speak from the audience, but if I understand correctly, as with the petition signed, is that those in the, to the north want all R-40 placeholder. And that they compromised to R-12, but there was an agreement, there wasn't unanimous agreement from the people to the north to be R-12. That's my understanding.
The north, I believe unanimously.
Support R-40.
R-40.
So the compromise was in the middle because, as a proposed compromise, but it was not accepted by everybody to the north. They just went toward them, toward the 40. They didn't go.
So they compromised, they don't like the compromise?
That's right. That's correct. And I don't think R-20 was never on the table and we've closed the public hearings. I have no idea what people would feel about R-20. It needs to be something. But our question would be, wouldn't it, if we do R-40, it's unlikely that people will sell it and put 11 houses on it. So it's going to be R something, a smaller number.
I think R-40's right.
So we might short circuit it if we did R-20, if you're comfortable with that. And then, but we may have 68 people that signed a petition that say they wished it had been R-40. So we need to.
Yeah, the only question I'd ask about that, since it would have changed drastically since what was originally proposed at the public hearing, would we need another public hearing or should we hold another public hearing? I'm looking at the town attorney.
Legally, because you're making it more restrictive, you wouldn't require another public hearing.
No, because you're making it more restrictive. Right.
How many, if it were R-20, how many homes then? You gave us a number for R-12 minus the 15%. What is the, what is your guesstimate? And I know it's.
Well, for R, if it were R-20, then that's roughly half acre lots. So you would take out some.
20 then houses, probably because if you're 24 and a half for 25 houses and you lose 15%, you're down to 20 houses down from what half of what R-8 would be.
It's 22. It's about 22 houses. It could be 23.
Down from, down from 44 where it could have been at R-8. Is that about where we were? So we're down to 20 houses. And we're down to houses that are, on lots that are about the same size as those to the south. And there's a green space and.
But the HOA has already compromised. They wanted R-8. They've already compromised to, and they're the ones that own this land, correct?
That's where the applicant.
So the harm, harm to the HOA.
Right, that's what I'm.
The harm to the HOA of, if we were to put it at R-20 or R-40, and they didn't have a market for a buyer, there was no buyer who wants to develop at R-20 or R-40, is that whoever is interested in developing that land will have to go through a rezoning process to get the land entitled. At which time, they will probably meet with the neighbors, try to figure out how they can make this complimentary to the community, and go through that exercise that most applicants go through. And that is, that is the downside to the HOA who owns this property, is that they're not passing on land that's already entitled.
I guess my question would be, what is the urgency timeline of needing to get this zone to market in order to address their infrastructure issues?
That is a question I would need to refer to the homeowners association. I believe Mr. Lemire is here that perhaps could speak to those types of issues.
If it's okay with the council, it's unusual to have somebody speak outside of a public hearing. We can call them up to get information just on that specific question. If that's okay, would they?
Who's the person again?
Mr. Lemire.
Is Mr. Lemire here?
Can I bring Steve Jacob with me?
We just want you to answer one question.
Want you to answer a specific question.
And speak of nothing else, because it's not a public hearing.
I think it's, very well first, which is why I wanted to have him answer it with me. So in short, we have a very specific timeline in which we're going to be getting a very significant bill from the town of Cary for our water and sewer services that are now under, or soon to be under construction. We're going to owe you a lot of money. We're going to owe to you very soon. That's why we're trying to get the land into a reasonable zoning where we can go and say, you know what, it's already zoned. We want to, the idea behind it was that we would also maintain control from an HOA association. We would be able to say, you know what, we're going to sell this land, but we're going to make you part of the HOA. So we can regulate what goes on in that, in that, in that 12 acres. We don't want to just give it to anybody and say, you know, wash our hands and walk away. It's not what we want to do. So the idea, again, is that we would go in, we'd get it at an R-8 or an R-12, you know, knowing what Kildare Estates said. We obviously don't want to take their thoughts into consideration. We don't want to start any wars. But yes, that is the urgency.
Okay. Does that answer the question?
Not really.
How's very soon?
Mike, are we talking six months, 12 months?
For the, for the water and sewer improvements?
When they, when they get a bill in the mail.
And then how long before they have to pay it?
Tim, yeah. I think if we get a bill, we would like to get.
We are actively designing our system and working with the homeowners. We're already approaching the timeframe where we should be under construction with them. Our billing is associated with when we go to construction and we're getting very close to that. We have a few easement issues we're working on. And as soon as we can get those easements, we would, we would go, let bids and then would need funds before we would award the contract. So I'm predicting we're probably only two or three months away. I'm not the project engineer and I don't know the specifics, but just knowing what I know, I think that's about the timeframe that we're looking at.
And if that project was delayed, is there a sanitary sewer issue? I mean, are these things like in, are they not going to have water sewer? I mean, what's going to happen?
They have service through Aqua. There's additional charges for those services, even though we are charging Aqua for the sewer service at the, in-town rates since annexation. But they have some markups and their water rates are higher. And I believe there is some water quality concerns. Not a health hazard, but I think some iron and coloration issues with the Aqua water that's a concern. So there's some minor issues that would be very helpful to get them on. I hate to speak for them, but that's my understanding of the situation. And of course, there's marketing time to just sell this property for them to get the funds and close that's on their side of the equation.
Very time consuming process.
Exactly.
This, which is what I'm struggling with is, I hear both sides of the argument, I really do. And I'm sympathetic to both sides. I'm still trying to find out, I don't want to make a decision that kills a deal, that stops a project, that leaves them with bad water quality or health issues or those kinds of things. You know, I, this decision is more than just how many homes should be built on this piece of dirt. And that's what I'm really struggling with right now. I actually, given that this property would be brought into the HOA and they would have some type of control over that and not want to degrade the quality of their own neighborhood, I'm inclined to go with the R-12. I can't tell you the last time we zoned anything, R-20, R-40. I can sympathize and appreciate the adjoining residents' concerns about wanting to have some input on the zoning. I get that. This one's complicated.
Can you tell us how much the bill is? I'm just curious. Do we know?
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Hundreds of thousands? Is it exceeding a million?
The town's cost is well over that, but the cost the residents pay is only a part of the total cost.
So the HOA will owe the town less than a million, or you?
Hundreds of thousands.
So there's, there's multiple pieces to this. There is the fees due to the town. But then there's also the cost to convert over their homes to, the plumbing in their homes, that's a part of that. I don't know a whole lot about those costs. We've talked with them about reusing some of their pumps maybe to reduce those costs, but I think there's more and more owners that are wanting to get more permanent plumbing in to avoid that. So I don't know all the costs, but again, I believe we're at a minimum in the $250,000 range sum for the neighborhood and could be approaching five depending on what, 500,000 depending on what options we have on the individual home site.
What's the value of land in this area per acre?
Generally, residential land in this part of town is probably anywhere, again, with zoning, as R-40 holding zoning is probably has much lower value. But with zoning, it's probably anywhere from 100,000 to approaching maybe 170 or 180 per acre.
That's the answer I needed. Because in one point, I'm like, oh my gosh, we need to be able to have this so they can generate enough money. They're not going to be able to generate enough money if it's R-20, they need R-12 that can generate enough money. If you're telling me at R-40, it's 100,000 and?
If it stays at R-40.
If it stays at R-40.
It's much less.
Okay, so if it's, like, if it's, if it's R-12, what is it now? What would, what would it generally be?
I mean, generally, it's based on a per lot value at the end of the day, but they have to take the infrastructure price off of that, the developer has to put into it, and other costs such as getting the entitlement in place. I don't have an exact number there, but it really varies with a lot size. What I, the numbers I'm quoting are generally for what we see in Cary, which is R-8 and R-12 zoning. I don't have any experience with R-20 or 30 or 40.
Okay, so if they got only 50,000 an acre for this 12 acres, then they'd have more than enough to cover. And that's, and that's a very low estimate. This isn't an infrastructure-heavy 12-acre parcel because it's not along a major road. You don't need to have a thoroughfare going through it. So if this was one of these situations where I was hearing that they needed every single penny they could get off of this to be able to afford, if this was a $5 million bill coming to them, I would maybe tip my scale on the side of saying, yeah, let's, let's go with 35 units in this 12-acre parcel, change the way this whole community looks and feels over here. But at this cost differential, it's not compelling to me. So I personally am going to stick with my thought that I would want this to be R-20 or more. And if somebody, if some applicant wants to go with greater densities, he or she can come into us and work with the neighbors and come up with an amicable set of conditions that makes it work.
If I had assurances that what you're saying is correct, I would agree with you. While I wholeheartedly appreciate Mr. Bailey's best guesstimates, I, we don't know the intricacies of the details and the value of the land. Reality, anything in this world is worth what anybody's willing to pay for it. So I have no idea what it's worth. So I don't want to sit here and guesstimate numbers and possibly put them in a very bad situation.
Well, I want to get back to just the whole concept of, you know, what are we trying, you know, the whole concept by the minority opinion on the P&amp;Z was, it allows some, some negotiation leveraging. And then the real question is, you know, does that, we've had negotiations in the past that have been in good faith and things get worked out. And like with protest petitions where all the needs were met, and then they still don't remove the protest petition, you know? You get it where it becomes an obstruction rather than a help. So the question in my mind is, when this goes through the Cary development process, you're going to have the stringent buffers, you've got stringent guidelines, you're going to have the stringent this, you know? What really is the leverage, except maybe it feels good and you feel like you might have a little more control? But are we really, to add all of this, all these other steps by putting a placeholder in? The one good news is that people recognize it's a placeholder. You know, in the past, we used to have to worry about, people really thought R-40 was R-40. And, you know, we had one example in all of our years. So it's good that people understand it's not real. It's just, it is what it is, a placeholder. I'd rather be called that, our placeholder. But, you know, I'm just wondering, and, you know, pushback, but I mean, I'm wondering just how much control is there in that negotiation process? The answer's I'm not sure. But we're going to have some pretty, you know, we're going to have stream buffer issues that we're going to deal with, we're going to have to deal with all the land use issues, we're going to have to deal with all of that. And it isn't like we're pretty rigid about that. We tend to work with the community on that. And this already is a compromise to help a situation that we were forced into by annexing. And R-12 seems pretty darn reasonable.
Yeah, we're.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, you're right, it's a tough one.
To me, it's catch 22 or maybe catch 12. We're, the, this, we're in the middle between the state. We could, this happened because, you know, we didn't annex it, right? I mean, this came down to us.
This was our. It was to rescue this.
It was to rescue this subdivision, yeah.
Yeah, so we're, so we're.
Because we're not allowed to.
Right, so we're, we got, we're in this, and then they're stuck. If they can't sell it to pay for it, and then they each got to come up with, the HOA's got to come up with money they don't have, and then they each got to dig into their pockets, then we're talking about people not able to pay their, make their contribution, and then they lose their house or they, I mean, I don't, this is a, this is a catch. It sounds like a typical government catch to me. And I want to figure a way out of this catch.
Other comments? Are we ready for a motion?
The real issue that no one wants is the traffic going through their neighborhood. I mean, that's, that's the heart of the issue. If the best guesses, excuse me, the best guess is that R-12 is going to give us, is going to yield perhaps 35 lots. One of the speakers said they would be happy with 24 to 29. I mean, it's going to be a traffic issue going through these people's neighborhoods, whether there are 24 houses, 29 houses, or 35. Yeah, 35 is going to be worse than 29. I understand that. But it's going to be the same problem that's going to result when we get to, get to site plan or connectivity or where that road's going to go, because chances are the road's or connectivity or where that road's going to go, because chances are, the road's going to go through the neighborhoods to the north. So I think it's an issue one way or the other, and whether it's R-12 or R-20 or whatever number we put on it. I don't think this is going to develop anything greater than R-12. I really, I don't think it's going to be 20 or 40. I think it's going to develop as 12. It's reasonable, it's efficient, they don't have to come back again. I really would support the R-12. And knowing we're going to have an issue with that traffic when it comes to site plan under any circumstances.
Would you like to make a motion then?
I guess I would, since it's R-12 here in front of us, I would support the staff recommendation as presented for 50 and REZ 22.
As a motion?
As a motion.
Second.
There's a second. All right, further discussion.
I just want to say that I believe that we are solving an immediate problem and creating a much bigger problem long-term. This is going to change the community for the people who live right around here, who back up to this land. 35 units on, which is the potential of what they could logically get, is a lot of houses in a small area, and I don't think it's right for it to be done to the residents here.
Other comments?
Is there any way within our procedure here to get any more feedback from anybody else?
Unless you call another public hearing. And I ask the attorney, usually we're going the opposite direction of where we call a public hearing.
What are you thinking?
Yeah, what are you going to gain by more feedback?
What would you like to see happen?
I would love to see a raise of hands, is what I would love to see, but I don't know if that's even possible.
Raise of hands of who?
Well, the people are here and...
Well, I could tell you, everybody is...
We're elected to make tough decisions.
This isn't...
We know that answer. This isn't, we're not going to take polls on every issue that comes before the council.
Yeah, just not going to happen.
It's a tough decision.
You know, I look at the 12, it's got from 8 to 12 to 20. I mean, it seems transitional. I get the concerns, the concerns are real. But at the end of the day, like, kind of, I don't want to speak for or put words in Mr. Yerha's mouth, but, you know, if it's 25 homes, 33 homes, does that take it, does that go good to bad, really? I mean, I just...
Yeah, I mean, I really, I don't really agree at all that we're solving one problem short-term for a bigger problem later. It is, it's a value, we're now into a values discussion, do we believe? You know, and I don't think there's an easy answer here. I, you know, I see merits to both sides, but in the end, I think 35 homes there to code and to the guidelines and all the other stringent things we have that we can, we can be, we can address most of the concerns that are out there. But if the concern is we just don't want that density near us, we're not going to solve that problem. We're just not going to solve that problem.
Can I ask a question?
Whatever way we went, we either delay with a 40 and then deal with this later or deal with it now.
Can I ask, in the drawing...
You can only ask the staff.
Staff. Can I ask the staff drawing? I'm not going to pull a trickle. That yellow that goes into the R-20 little loop at the bottom, is that a gap between two lots that's a particular width that meets the particular minimum width of a road potentially?
It does not.
Okay.
It's, I believe it's just a, probably an access drive to get into the area, but for the road, a public road to go through that area would need a 50-foot right-of-way, and it's not, it's not that wide.
Okay, so it's time for a vote. It's not going to be an easy one, but all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
Aye.
Or nay? Motion carries five to two. Consistency statement, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consistency and reasonable of this statement.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to two. Our last discussion is a funding consideration for the downtown parking deck related items. Mr. Kuhn will present the item, then the council may take action. Mr. Kuhn.
Good evening, council. At the November work session, staff received direction on the location of the library and the parking deck as shown in the images. We also received direction on what the facade of the parking deck would look like, which is similar to this image. We also presented in Table 1 the cost for the parking deck and the cost for the regional stormwater at that November work session. Since that time, there's been a couple additional items, and those are shown in Item Table 2, which included integrated public art and a sprinkler system in the parking deck.
Mr. Kuhn, would you hold on? Could we please take conversations outside, ladies and gentlemen?
Please, please take it out.
Please take it outside. Thank you. Continue, please.
So tonight, staff is requesting direction on setting up the projects. First is a, staff recommends DT 1123 to be renamed to the DT Regional Stormwater, and that $814,590 be appropriated, bringing the available balance to 1.2 million. And then the second item is to request that a new project be set up to establish, at an established amount of 7.15 million, and name the DT Library Parking Structure in order to support design and construction. Our third item is, staff is seeking council direction on the inclusion of integrated public art and whether or not additional uses are desired in the parking deck to determine if a sprinkler system is needed. If either of these items are approved, additional appropriations are needed, and we've kind of laid out the options on the screen. So staff is available for any questions you may have.
Okay, I'm going to try to lead us through this, and you stop me when I mess up. First motion needed is appropriate $814,590 from the general fund balance to project DDT, ooh, I thought they banned DDT, DDT 1123 and rename it DT Regional Stormwater. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Second motion needed is to establish DT Library Parking Structure project and to appropriate $7,150,000 from general fund balance to the project. Is there a motion on this?
So moved.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The third motion needed is regarding the inclusion of public arts and whether or not an additional use is desired for the parking deck. If so, a sprinkler system is necessary. I'm not sure if there's council support on this. If so, I would entertain a motion giving, motion giving council direction to staff regarding these items.
Well, I'm confused about something I wanted to ask.
Okay, yes, please.
Do that.
Okay, let's do that.
The question is the sprinkler system. What do you mean by additional use that would require? I mean, I just want to have a better understanding of that.
For, the parking deck itself doesn't require a sprinkler system, but if you want to add an element, at the work session, it was talked about, that it might be nice to add something. I think in the staff report, we mentioned a flea market or something inside the parking deck as a operation issue, then that would trigger having, if it's over 12,000 square feet, it would trigger doing a sprinkler system. If you want to keep it strictly as a parking deck, then we don't need to have a sprinkler system, as long as it's an open parking deck.
Was there also something about whether the stairwell was enclosed or not, or open or not, that required something different?
It's not the stairwell, but it's the parking deck itself and how it's constructed. If it has a certain amount of airspace and openings, then it's an open parking deck. And that's the intent right now, is to be an open, so it wouldn't require it. But if walls or other reasons, it gets more enclosed, then it would require the sprinkler.
And the picture that was shown previously, which is one of these things we can't hold anybody to, right? Did that have enough openness so it would not require a sprinkler system?
Correct.
Okay.
Could you go back over the uses? Because this is where I was struggling with the staff report. The only two examples were like a disc golf tournament and a flea market, so inside of a parking deck?
And actually, staff would be looking for some direction from council on if there was something specific you were looking for in the parking deck. I think we may have heard something at the work session about possibly doing some uses in there. So if that's not anything you want to do, then we can take that off the table.
Like the art space on the ground.
Right, but that was, they added sprinklers to that, they told us at the session afterwards. So, yeah.
That's my question. If we don't do it now, and if we chose to do it in the future, is it same numbers? Is it different? Does it get more expensive to not do it now?
It's generally always more expensive to add in the future.
Because usually you see them bolted to the concrete roofs, so... But if we did add something to the lower level, you would only have to put it on the lower level, is that correct? And is that the 600, or does the 600 cover all levels of the deck?
It was covering all levels of the deck.
And if someone came in later and wanted to skin the deck, let's say 15, 25 years from now, someone wanted to skin the deck with the use, would the deck have to have a sprinkler system in it, since it has development along one side?
If it, I believe if it becomes an enclosed parking deck, then that would trigger...
Even just one side?
Yeah. If it didn't meet the requirements of the building code for an open deck and an enclosed deck.
So we have more options, is what I hear you saying? If we put the sprinkler in it, we have more options for use?
Yes.
I wish that, maybe, maybe I'm thinking out loud again, but I don't understand why we would spend $600,000 when we don't have a clear idea of what we want to do with it. Right? I just, it would be different if staff had, oh, we have like 25 things that we could do, and they're all great, right? Then I might say, oh, wow, some of those sound interesting, but a flea market or disc golf, eh, do that outside. I don't know why you need it in a parking deck.
And if you want to do it in the rain, you could turn the sprinklers on.
Yeah. At the same time, just for discussion, because I can't believe I'm saying this.
You're thinking out loud.
If you start to see all these activities come and the whole character and chemistry of downtown becomes alive and vibrant, you know, maybe, you know, I'm struggling to think of the uses. And I wish I did, because it would make it easier to make the decision. But it's not inconceivable that in four or five years, you know, as everything's getting built out and we start getting all these activities, be they the next generation of farmers markets or whatever else, and we might see where space is at a premium and we have an opportunity on uncertain days or certain times to use the deck, you know, would we be better served as we're trying to, you know, be inclusive for the future that we'd want to do this? And I ask that, looking for feedback, because...
We've been on a lot of...
You know what I'm trying to say?
...visits and trips and looked at a lot of downtowns and seen a lot of parking structures and development, and I can't recall ever seeing a deck that was used for some type of event. I've seen where they've retrofitted a level and added art space or whatever on the lower level or added that in later, but I don't ever recall one being used.
Okay, so I have. And it was so weird. I think it was Myrtle Beach, and they converted, they had an underutilized parking deck, and they converted it to a miniature golf course. It was very quirky.
Okay, so I don't ever recall seeing one that would ever happen in...
Yes, and that is, that is what I was going to follow up with, is that, I mean, the only time you really have a use for that is when you have an underutilized parking deck that you cannot imagine will ever be underutilized. So in that sense, I feel pretty safe not putting in the sprinkler system, and then if we ever want to do something with that space, do it later. Do it later.
And that would include an office building if we got one too close, that shared a side that closed it in, and part of that office...
That would be the cost of building that office.
You'd have to add it, that makes sense.
What about public art?
Oh, fun topic.
Well, what they showed us, that photograph, oh, we could get one that looks a lot like this. I like the way that looks.
Yes.
Sometimes I get nervous with public art, because then you end up with something shiny and metal-y, flapping off the side.
Or pole with a bird on it.
I like the pole with the bird. But it's a little bit risky. I just want it to be aesthetically pleasing. If it could just be architecturally done nicely, I'd be really happy.
I tend to agree with you.
We've complained at this table, unfortunately, a couple of times about how the art wasn't integrated, and we didn't see it beforehand, and we slapped it on afterwards. They said, here, you want to do it integrated? We've said that over and over, and staff brought it to us and said, okay, put your money where your mouth is. Do you want it? I think because it's right next to the Cary Art Center, and we've got all the art going in downtown, I think we'd miss out on an opportunity if we don't do the integrated art. I think it's just a continuation of the great things that we do, and I'd like to see the public art being integrated.
I'll make a motion to not do the sprinkler system and to include the public art.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Wait a minute, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get my heart going again.
Well, okay, so, wait, are you bringing up comments? My comment on that is like, sometimes like when I was in high school, I wanted to be asked to the dance, but I didn't actually want to go to the dance. And that would be the same way I feel about the art. Like, I want to be asked if I want the art, but it doesn't necessarily mean I want the art. If that makes sense. So I don't want, I don't really want the art here. I just want an aesthetically pleasing building.
This is, is going to be in an area that's pretty much going to be considered, whether it's officially titled or not, Arts District. It's going to be the Art Center, there's going to be tons of art in the park. I think Lori's argument is legit. I do. So integrated art, tastefully done, not in your face, not shiny metal objects hanging off the building or some weird stuff that nobody can tell what it is, I think would work very well.
Then you would have to have, like, council review early, be that...
No, 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 I don't, no, no.
Yeah, you, no, because what happens is, is the Public Art Advisory Board thinks that they're going in the right direction, they put a lot of effort and time into it, and then it comes to the council for final approval, and we go, what? This is what you guys came up with? We hate it. And then it's unfair to the Public Art Advisory Board. If we're going to do something like this, we ought to be involved upfront and then give the guidance to the Public Art Advisory Board, so they're going in the right direction.
Mr. George, you have some comments?
Well, as the Public Art Advisory Board liaison, there was much interest at the December meeting to include integrated public art in the deck, and they were quite excited about working on this and being an integrated thing. Not a statue outside, but integrated in the deck. And I think that we, I would certainly support that from...
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to trust the process a little bit here. This is $180,000, you're not going to get a blue barber pole or anything like that. This is, this sends a message that we have a great community with a lot of people that have great feedback on public art. This is an integrated piece. I believe that that organization that Ken just became liaison to understands that it's a partnership, understands that role, and I don't think we're being fair to them with some of these comments. So, I mean, I applaud that we're considering it, and I was really glad to hear that you're including that in the motion.
Ed, I think you're the only one that hasn't spoken.
Well, I support the motion, especially if, I think the staff report said that the Public Art Board said this could be a memorable landmark. I believe that was the two words used. And if we get art that could result in a memorable landmark, this is, I would trust the process too. I think this is in a very traditional historic district there, and I don't, based on the experience with the pole and the bird, I really think we would be getting something pleasing too, or something traditional, something, you know, something that would add to the flavor of that district, especially if, we've gotten complaints, I have informally anyway, putting a parking deck facing the park, you know, if we can spiff that up in some way, you know...
That was all of our intent.
That would be, you know, appropriate to do. So I support it.
I do want to clarify something, though, because I sat in that meeting with the Art Advisory Board, and there is, I don't, does this mean, when this is integrated, does it say integrated?
Yeah.
Yes, built into the structure. Yes.
All right, where am I reading it wrong? Or does it say into the structure, or is it on the...
Integrated.
Integrated, as far as...
I mean, it's considered in the design and construction process?
I'm looking for the wording right here.
I think it's on a previous slide.
Okay, I messed up, okay. Okay, I messed up. Okay. As opposed to using any spot that's outside of the parking deck to display something, this is actually part of
Part of
That's, that's my understanding.
That was clear when I was on the
That's what I want to be sure, that's clear.
Now, it doesn't mean it's going to be the whole deck art. It could just be a stairwell. It could be, you know.
I'm good with it.
But I think, I would hope after all these years, that staff has a pretty good feel of what this council's looking for, and at the end of the day, knows they have to count to four.
And Mr. Major's going to add on to
Ms. Mary, just, and just to make sure, council, this $180,000 is to get the artist. That may not add any additional cost other than the $180,000, but depending on what they come up with, there could be additional cost, and we would be coming to you. So this isn't necessarily only $180,000. It could be more or less, but we would be coming to you once the concepts are put forth.
So, to make sure I understand that, this is paying for the artist, he creates concepts, and then we might pay more money?
To get it integrated, there's a potential that there would be more, require more money.
But I thought we appropriated half a million dollars to make it look nice
Right.
to begin with, and I would propose that this $180 be spent
Cap to $100,000.
Kind of figure out how to incorporate it into the half million dollars we've already appropriated.
Right, right.
Yeah. Mr. McReynie's going to help us.
Or try.
Try.
The $180,000 is for the artist. There's also additional funding. Within that $180, also help cost for the time the artist takes with the architect and the engineer for the deck. But what the artist will be told, it's already in the RFP, because we've developed it, is that they will work within that budget to cover, okay? Also, part of the process that we've talked about with the Transportation Facilities Department, is that we will be coming back, the artist has already been told, at least in the document, that there'll be three to five options, okay? Not one option that you've got
You've been listening, Doug.
Took a while. Took a while. So, and then what Mr. Major is saying, that if
They could come back with one more.
And we would, and, you know, there'd be a range of options. Of course, you might like something that was a little bit beyond, but you'd have the option to say yea or nay.
So in general, $180 is going to cover it.
Unless, unless they come up with something shiny.
Yeah.
I feel better.
The intent is to save them the money.
I feel better. That makes me feel much better. Other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries six to one.
Thank you.
Want to do that again?
No, we don't want to do that one again. Did we leave out anything? I think we got all the motions?
I think we got everything out.
All right, so thank you. And my understanding, we do not have a closed session?
You're closed.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.